Zoning Board of Appeals meeting to order. Can I roll call please, B?
Mr. Delacorte?
Here.
Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Martin, Mr. Barr?
Here.
Mr. DiNardo?
Here.
Mr. Delany?
Here. All right, first order of business, acceptance of minutes from March 26th, 2024. Has everybody had a chance to review?
Yes.
Yes.
Any changes?
No.
Revisions?
No.
Can I have a motion to accept the minutes as written?
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
I so moved. All right, I'd like to rise for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands on the nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all. Okay. Yeah, turn it down maybe. Wait for B to get back to her station there. You cool us down a little bit?
It's a little bit hot, yes.
All right, next order of business tonight is public hearing. Appeal number 247817, area variance. Christopher Nicole Sawicki seeking an area variance, section 24037 of district regulations in an R20 zoning district where 20 feet to the side left yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 14.5 feet for the construction of a 4.5 by 4.5 deck with stairs, thus requesting a variance of 5.5 feet. The property is located at 105 Edge Hill Drive on .52 acres and is identified as tax grid number 635803141136 in the town of Wapinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Motion to open the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, so, for the record, please, your name and address.
Chris Sawicki, 105 Edge Hill Drive.
Okay, so the board's benefit, anybody might be listening in, what you need and why you need it.
I'm sorry, I couldn't even...
For the boards and anybody who's listening in, just a brief description of what you need and why you need it.
I have an existing deck, which is a little over, I think it's four feet wide. New deck will be six inches larger. Old deck is falling down. New deck will aim the opposite direction that the stairs are now, heading towards the backyard as opposed to my front yard. It's just a simple replacement and ease of use.
Gotcha, and we were all out there. Well, Tom, you went another day, right?
He came on one day.
You made it, made the trip.
Yesterday.
Got it?
Yes.
And we were there on Saturday, you know, see what you got going on there. I mean, pretty straightforward.
Yeah.
You know, really, nothing crazy that I could think of. Answered all our questions. We were out at the site, at your home. You guys have any other additional questions?
No.
No.
Yeah, I don't think so either. Anybody in the audience have any questions concerning this application? Okay, so, can I have a motion then, please, to close the public hearing, right? All right, can I motion to close?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. All right, can I have a motion then, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion to grant the variance. The, it's not really even a deck, you know, it's more a stair landing.
Yeah.
It's replaced an existing structure with similar size. I think it's not going to be noticeable to most people. I understand why you're trying to do it. The benefit can be achieved by no other means. There's no undesirable change since it's essentially the same as what is there now. Request is not substantial. There's no adverse physical environmental effect, and the difficulty is self-created.
Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please.
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Mr. Delany?
Yes, all right, so your, her application has been granted.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
You too. Thank you.
Forgot to do the floor vote thing, but I'll do it next time. All right, next item up on the agenda, appeal number 247818, area variance. Kayla and Christopher Morales seeking an area variance, section 24037 of district regulations in an R40 zoning district where 25 feet to the side left yard property line is required, the applicant can provide 13 feet 9 inches for the construction of an 8-foot by 15-foot pool deck with stairs on the left side of the property, thus requesting a variance of 11 feet 3 inches. The property is located at 23 Dosie Road on .51 acres and is identified as tax grid number 635803011336 in the town of Wapinger. Could I have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Have a second?
I'll second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Okay, please, for the record, your name and address.
Christopher Morales, 23 Dosie Road.
Gotcha, and again, for the board's benefit, anybody listening in, what you need and why you need it, briefly.
Yes, I'm asking for relief of the setback requirements for a pool deck. 25 feet is required. I can give 13.9, 13 foot 9 inches.
Gotcha. And we were all out there, we all were out there and took a look, saw what you got. Obviously, the property is somewhat odd-shaped, right, pie-shaped?
Correct.
Causing you some difficulty in hit the setbacks. Again, did a good job of working everything out, answering our questions when we were out there. You guys have any other additional questions or concerns?
Don't just remind them about the floor vote.
Oh, yeah, that's correct, you know, thanks, Don. Just our heads up, we may have mentioned this on Saturday, you know, it's a four-member, it's a four-member board tonight, right? So the vote would have to be unanimous. A tie would be a no, and it's up to you whether you'd like to proceed or wait for the next meeting to have a full board.
I would like to proceed if we could.
Okay, okay.
I just had a question, B.
Sure.
Really, for Judy. Description of the product?
Product.
Project. Says, and I was asking, but I couldn't get an answer. Would the 17 by 5 by 21.5 platform deck need to be cut into two pieces to meet co-re requirements? I just wasn't familiar with that.
It, both decks meet the same point along the property line, so it was asking relief for, they're both at exactly 13.9 inches.
Oh, okay, so it really had nothing to do with the size of it?
No.
It's just because of where it is?
Okay.
How it's laid out and they actually meet, the plan was a little bit wonky when you looked at it, but it's exactly the same dimension and the same requirement for variance.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, a little, a little, a little funky to understand it. You guys, any other questions, you guys?
No.
Just one question for Judy. The overhang of the house, which is at 18 feet 4 inches, is there any issue with that?
Is there curtains hanging on the other side?
Yes.
No.
Okay, even though it's a roof structure, okay.
That's fine.
Okay.
We've determined that.
Okay. Again, just for your benefit, you know, it's easier for you to legalize things when you're...
Here now.
Doing it once rather than having to do this process.
Okay. And we did notice that the shed was cut down.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'd like to just ask a quick question. So when we were, we were talking, are you taking that down completely?
Yes.
Okay, so we can put a condition if you'd like to have that down by June 30th on this, just to make sure that that...
Yeah, sure. No problem.
Sure. Are we talking about the extra space on top or the whole thing?
The whole thing is coming down.
The whole thing's coming down.
It was existing when I purchased the house and...
I think it's got two walls up where we're there, right?
Right, yeah, there isn't much to it, really.
No, and I have the rest of the fencing material to finish off the property.
Gotcha. Anybody in the audience have any questions concerning this application? All right, can I have a motion, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
All right, so moved. Can I have a motion then, please, to grant or deny the applicant the variance? I'll make a motion to grant the applicant the variance. I don't believe the benefit can be achieved by any other feasible means. Will not create any undesirable change to the neighborhood. The request is somewhat substantial, but that's not enough for me to deny it. Whether there'll be any adverse effects to the environment, there will not be. Whether the effect is self-created, yes, it is, but again, not enough for me to deny. You have a unique property, right? And then sometimes when we have these issues that come across the board, we have to take that into account, that whether it's a property or an accumbrance that you may encounter. So all that being said, you know, I move to grant the applicant the variance. Can I have a second? Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, we're going to add the condition that the existing shed be removed by June 30th.
Yep.
Okay. Can I have a second?
I'll second.
Can I roll call?
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes.
Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Mr. DiNardo?
Yes.
Yes, okay, your application is granted.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you.
Okay, next up on the agenda, appeal number 247819, area variance, DC Sports renovation, seeking an area variance, section 24037 of district regulations in an H B zoning district where 75 feet from the property, front property line on a county or state road is required, the applicant can provide 15 feet for the construction of a rope slash aerial course, thus requesting a variance of 60 feet. The property is located at 1630 Route 9 on 2.95 acres and is identified as tax grid number 615804551329 in the town of Wapinger. Have a motion, please, to open the public hearing?
Motion.
Grab a second?
Second.
On favor?
Aye.
So moved. Please, for the record...
My name's Andrew White with Lisk McQuarrie from Navorous Architects. I'm one of the architects for the firm here for, in behalf of DC Sports, to present this structure, which is approximately a 30 by 30 structure for a ropes aerial course that's 30 feet high from the surrounding grade.
Pete, I've got to tell them about the four people.
Yeah, again, just a reminder that there's a four-member board tonight, right? It's usually five, so the vote then would have to be unanimous. A tie vote would be a denial. Joe, it's up to you if you'd like to proceed or wait for a full board.
I'd like to proceed, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Continue, that's good, no, thanks for the reminder.
We're seeking a, excuse me, a variance for the front yard setback, which is supposed to be 75 feet. We have, we're looking to have 15 feet to allow for the structure to be placed from the Route 9 address, and at this time, if I can point out...
Sure.
That there are existing structures that are within 4.6...
Sorry?
Almost. There was a structure here on the site already that is 14 and a half feet from the setback, and then the adjacent property, there's a structure within 12 foot 2 inches of the front property line as well, and we're looking to be beyond those two. Just want to get that to your attention, so you have that in mind.
Yeah, understood. We were at the site again on Saturday, Tom, he was out there, but at a different time. See what you got going on there. Tried with the balloon, but it was a little too windy for the balloon, so we didn't really see, but we got a pretty good idea.
At one point, you could kind of...
Yeah, the wind died down a little bit, we got a pretty good idea what we were looking as far as height goes, you know, and it's very, very close to that castle-type structure that's there already. And we had everything marked out in the pool on where it's going, where it's at. I mean, we had some questions regarding maybe attempting to do a little screening out there. David had a question about that, and if you wanted to ask or had that...
Yeah, I think you said you were going to look into cost ramifications of that? I don't know if you got anywhere with that.
I'm going to go.
Yeah, sure, and it's your name, please.
Sure. Dan Pizarelli, owner of DC Sports. I did look into it. I have, waiting on a quote of what I need to see what I can do to try to get maybe a few trees or bushes added up there to the front of it. I didn't finalize anything yet, though.
Yeah, we, with David, had mentioned maybe some kind of abreviate or something like that, where you get some height, you know, for a short period of time. It's probably more, more a height type of...
It would be a height thing, just to screen it from both, you know, the properties across the street and, and, you know, driving down, you know, Route 9 there.
And also, that would benefit you, I would think, to be, well, for noise.
Correct. I mean, again, it's, you know, buying something like that may take years to grow that high. I'm not going to buy fully grown trees to put in.
Right, but it would be unreasonable, right, to expect you to do that.
Right.
I mean, as a condition, would you be willing to accept insulation of three to four non-mature, you know, trees?
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, if that's what you guys are asking me to do, then I'll put them in.
I think I would specify abreviate, right?
Yeah, I would specify abreviate.
Yeah, trees, trees, you know, so it could be for anything. And abreviates are what you're going to get that your height benefit from.
It's going to give you the privacy you're looking for.
I believe that's the same as what you have on the side of the property anyways.
Yeah, yeah, those actually...
I'm not a tree person, so I have no idea, but, okay. The ones that are along the property, the south side, that's what they are.
It's a commonly used fast-growing tree, which is why it's often used.
Yes.
Before you guys make that decision, is something the planning board and the planner does in terms of landscaping, so you could make the recommendation to have a move to make that as a condition?
I'm sorry, B, I can't hear you.
Yeah, that would be...
As I was trying to say is, instead of us making that as a condition, it can be a recommendation, because this is something with respect to landscaping that has to be done at the planning board level, with the planner and on the site plan.
Okay.
I couldn't make that recommendation.
All right, so we, we could do that, as opposed to making it a condition of the variance, we can make it a recommendation to the planning board. Understood.
I would like to make another recommendation that, to the planning board, that they have their attorney look into a whole harmless letter. If someone were to get hurt on that property using that apparatus, the town is not responsible in any way.
They did ask those questions in the planning board.
Okay.
Yeah. And the county guy said that they're not liable.
And that's really the purview of the planning board, not this board.
Well, it's just that, you know, people are pretty super happy these days.
I agree with you.
You know, they stub their toe.
Oh, he would probably be the one to know.
I would think we could still state that as a recommendation. You know, we could still state that as a recommendation.
We said recommendation, but, right, it's not our...
Yeah, we'd be on the planning board then to deal with that.
Right.
I had one question. The 15 feet, is that to the first row of pylons? Or is that to the platform?
Um, well, it'll be to the pylon.
Okay, and then when we were on site, I think you said you were shifting the pylons back, so is it actually 15 or is it now 20?
No, so the Xs that are on the ground, they're closer than it's going to be, right? We're moving them farther away from that X that you did see.
So the X that we saw, was that at the 15 or...
No, that was more like...
That was like a 10?
Yeah, that was like, more like 12.
Okay.
Yeah, we're going three to four feet east.
Okay.
Toward, toward the building.
Toward the building, yeah, away from the road.
So the 15 feet reflects what you verbally told us, which is that it was being shifted in?
Yes.
Okay, got it.
The one, the question I had, we talked about, a little bit about the balloon, I wasn't there for that.
It didn't really go as planned, so I didn't miss much.
But you mentioned the height was about the size of the...
Existing castle.
Existing castle, which was 30 feet?
I don't actually have a height on it, but I would imagine it's going to be pretty darn close to that.
It looked pretty close, it looked pretty in alignment with the castle.
About 30 feet?
Assuming the string was 30 feet, yes.
Yeah, I mean, we, it was a brief moment where the wind died and then the balloon...
Very brief.
Kind of got up there, so we got a pretty good idea.
Yeah, if you turned around, it was over.
Yeah, and it was pretty close to that, pretty close to that. Okay.
The other point I would make is that, you know, I think with the castle on the one side of this, and you do have an existing tree on the other, which you said you were maintaining, I think this is fairly well screened, driving up and down the road, you know, it's really only, the property's immediately across, I think, you know, the one that has spoke with the, with the planning board that have views towards it, otherwise, I think it is, is fairly hidden.
The applicant also said he's going to put the palm trees back up, right?
Yes.
So you'll have higher level that way.
Yeah.
The existing palm trees will get its leaves, basically.
Correct. We take them down for winter because they're going to get ruined otherwise.
Right, yeah, gotcha, and then also provide some screening, actually at a better height than any abreviate you put there, that'll work even better. Okay, any, any other questions, you guys?
The board?
Anybody in the audience have any questions, concerns about this application? No? Okay, have a motion then, please, to close the public hearing?
Motion to close the public hearing.
Have a second?
Second.
On favor? So moved. All right, can I have then a motion to grant or deny the applicant the variance?
I'll make a motion that we grant the variance. The requested variance, although quite substantial on paper, is really pre-existing. You've had that variance for quite a while, what was given to you when, not you, but when the pool, the tub was created. So it will not produce an undesirable change in the neighborhood, I believe, and there will be no substantial detriment to the nearby properties. One side is, I think it's a self-storage site, and the other side is a tanning salon, and there's really nothing there except across Route 9, which is hustle-bustle anyway. I, looking at the site, I don't see another feasible means for you to be able to do this. I think it's actually a good idea because you're actually sitting inside the tub, so you're, you're losing some of your height right there, four feet, I think.
Yes.
So, so I think, I think that's probably the best way to do it, and of course, the requested variance is substantial. And as I said, I don't think it will have an adverse effect on the neighborhood, and the alleged difficulty is self-created, but it's, as I said, pre-existing, so I recommend that we grant the variance.
Okay, I'm going then to also then put the recommendations, right, on, on the variance. We'll recommend that the planning board look into the liability issue, right?
I would make that part of the variance. Make a recommendation that I send a letter to the planning board, instead of making that part of the variance.
Gotcha, okay, so we'll do the same, we'll do the same with the landscaping, okay? So we'll authorize B then to send a letter to the planning board on those two issues.
Yeah, I mean, we, we, do we make a motion that we would vote on the letter?
It's just a recommendation.
Yeah.
It's fine.
Okay, all right, so, Tom, his motion on the floor to grant the variance, and we have a second?
I'll second.
All right, can I roll call, please, B?
Mr. Delacorte?
Yes, granted.
Okay. Mr. Barr?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Delany?
Yes, okay, your variance has been granted.
Much appreciated.
Good, thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you, guys.
All right, next order of business on tonight's agenda, discussion, appeal number 74, I'm sorry, appeal number 247820, area variance, Old State Road 561-563, Gabe Vega seeking an area variance, section 24037 and 240, looks like 81.7B of district regulations in an H B zoning district where a minimum of 25% is required, the applicant can provide 13% of commercial office space, thus requesting a variance of 12%. The property is located at 561-563 Old Road, on, it's Old State Road, right? On .78 acres and is identified as tax grid number 615702580777 in the town of Wapinger. Okay, please, for the record, you are...
Brian Stokos, Dan Stokos Engineering here with the applicant, Gabe Vega.
Gotcha, gotcha.
We have an application that's currently in front of the planning board. We have an existing site that's bordered by two roads, and we have two existing structures on the parcel, and this, this application has been, actually not the application, but this parcel's been in front of the planning board for a number of years, with a previous owner with different iterations of how to bring this property, you know, back to life and repurpose it. Mr. Vega's come along and he's decided to, again, let's try to fix up the property, it's been dormant for a while, and in doing that, we had to go back to the planning board, because what we'd like to do is a mixed-use type of property. The existing building, which has been renovated, would be residential. We maintain that, and then there's a building next to it toward the Route 9 side that he'd like to renovate interior and exterior, bring it, bring it up to standards, and have a residential component in that, and then a small office space. And what we'd like to do is utilize a lot of the existing features on the property, there's the existing sidewalk, improve the parking lot area, and bring the site into conformance with typical site plan items such as, you know, dark sky compliant lighting and things like that, that go along with a typical site plan, but we'd be addressing landscaping and things like that. So we're here tonight as, in our iterations with the planning board, they did like the application, they do like the fact that we're trying to get this property back up and running, but we did hit a snag with that mixed-use component and being a little shy on the commercial win that's associated with that office.
There's basic proportions, right, that we're trying to, that work here, commercial versus residential. We have to try to, my mind, visualize where this actually is.
You know where Precision Performance Motor Cars is?
Yes.
Kind of directly behind that...
Behind a Nissan dealership.
Behind Nissan.
Gotcha, gotcha.
It is Palmeteer Way, Sergeant Palmeteer Way.
Right.
Old State Road.
Old State Road, just hooks around.
Gotcha.
Comes back out.
Gotcha. Yeah. What's he saying?
The 25% minimum that's required is a town code, that's for commercial.
Steve, that's the town code.
Thank you. Testies around?
Yeah. So, yeah, the town code requires 25% residential pay, like, for the commercial, you can't make the commercial because the residential is larger than it is.
Gotcha.
So the office, he's asking for a smaller office.
So you're basically asking to reduce the commercial component?
Right, and with this property, obviously finances are in play, so we're trying to generate some income to support the renovation, and in doing that, we thought just having that commercial component could help that along.
Right.
So it's, that's the main driver of this, to try to breathe in some, some light back.
Do you have a tenant for this property, or is, are they both of them being basically rented out?
He, I think you can probably let the applicant speak, but there's potential applicants or clients that are interested.
Yeah, we have applicants that...
Could you please state your name, Mark?
Gabriel Vega.
And your address?
561 Old State Road. So we do have people that are interested in renting out the, the property that's pretty much almost already renovated, and then for the one that's semi or we are going to renovate, the office component, it would either be myself, or we have an accountant that might be interested in renting out that portion of it, and then the residential component, I haven't really even, you know, bridged that gap because it's, we're a little far along for that, for that one.
Okay, so this isn't the type of situation where someone's living in the house, they want an adjacent office, you know?
No.
Okay.
Gotcha.
And just looking at the plans, so essentially, it's these two, Building 1 and Building 2, that we're really concerned about.
Right, correct. And Building, the Building 2, the west, is fairly renovated, so it's the Building 2. He's closer toward the former Nissan dealership is the one that we're going to be focusing on doing internal and external renovations. And just being price-conscious, the budget of this project has been enough proposing any expansion of the footprint of the buildings. Just trying to get some rentals in there so we can put the rest of the property.
The Building 1, office slash apartment, did you guys have a floor plan of that building? Like, how is that building being subdivided?
I don't know if we, we sent, I don't know if we submitted one for the planning board yet, because we were still in the initial presentation. But we could provide that for the next meeting.
If you have something even schematic, you know, that we could look at, I'd just be interested in seeing it.
Yep.
That's a single-story building?
Yeah.
Yeah, they both are.
Oh, yeah, right there. I see.
Yeah. Okay.
And which, the Number 1 is going to be the commercial?
The building toward the Nissan, that, I forget how it's numbered.
Okay.
That's 561.
I think.
Building, yes, Building 1.
Office apartment, okay.
And the properties have a shared well, it looks like, and I assume shared subdeck?
This property from the former, the previous applicant was connected to sort of...
Okay.
Okay. Any other questions?
Think it'd be good to go look at it.
Oh, yeah. We're going to do a site visit, right? We will do that, not this Saturday, but next Saturday, which would be the 20th, which would be April 20th. We'll be there about 9:00. Probably be helpful, or someone's there, you know, and so we can walk us around the property, and we can see exactly what's going on. Be self-explanatory, right, it will be helpful for there. So we'll be there on the 20th, and then we will schedule your public hearing for that following Tuesday, which would be the 23rd. All right, so we're going to schedule your public hearing for the 23rd. Okay? B has a sign for you that you'll have to post in the front yard property.
We need to mark out the second building, is it proposed?
They're both there.
I think they're both existing.
Yeah.
We got something else, we're good?
Okay, that's it, you're good. Yeah, we'll see you.
See you on Saturday.
Next up. Okay, next up on the agenda, appeal number 247821, area variance. Caitlin and Jesse Shellock seeking an area variance, section 24037 and 24020B of district regulations, in an R20 zoning district, where 50 feet to the front yard property line is required. The applicant can provide 15 feet to create a flagpole lot for the 30 Easter Road to access Circle Drive, thus requesting a variance of 35 feet. The property is located at 30 Easter Road on 1.0 acres, and is identified as tax grid number 605601216765 in the town of Wapungir. Please, your name and address, please.
Jesse Shellock, 12 Lake Drive.
Gotcha.
Wapungir's. Basically, what we're looking for is, this property is essentially landlocked, because the bridge at the end of Easter Road is impassable. And then the road that branches off of Circle Drive, that is a private driveway. So we have talked to, we have talked to the owner of the property directly in front of 30 Easter Road, that's 10 Circle Drive. He is willing to sell us 15, a sliver, so 15 feet, so we can put a driveway in, so we'd have access to the property. And that's essentially what we're asking for.
Walter Chudowski, okay. Vanessa Bugs is...
The seller of the house we're trying to buy?
I'm sorry, could you just tell us who you are?
Caitlin Shellock, and 12 Lake Drive, Wapungir's.
What's the address?
12 Lake Drive.
Lake Drive, okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
The property adjacent to you, it looks like it has a similar variance, right? That's also a flaglot? The one that has the gravel driveway, I guess, that accesses Easter Road? It looks like it's a similar shape.
It's similar, but it's not a flaglot. That's actually the easement between Circle and Easter.
Okay.
If I may, Frederick Roman, Gate Barrister's Row, Suite 1, Wapungir's Falls, New York.
Gotcha.
Hi, Mr. Roman.
Gotcha. Well, we kind of got, you know, pretty good idea. So, well, Tom and I are more familiar with Easter Road, right?
We have.
I think we've been there before.
I have.
Have you?
Yeah.
Yeah, so we, there's certainly some interesting things going on over there.
Without a doubt.
One of the most interesting in the town, right?
Right.
One of the most interesting in the town.
Yes, sure. Sure. Yeah, we totally understand what you're trying to do here, you know, to gain access to this.
Yes, lawful access.
Yeah, I think, you know, picture or your site visit's going to be worth 1,000 words, I think, is probably, probably best said. You know, it's definitely, you know, a landlocked piece of property.
But it has access, based on my research, it has, it has access. The property has access over Easter, but it's landlocked as a, not as a legal proposition, but as a physical proposition with respect to the drainage covert that's shot.
Well, without fixing that bridge, you're not getting back there on that road.
So it's just legal access? That's what this, is legal access?
Yeah, there is legal, insurable access.
What's that word?
Incurable?
Insurable. Basically, a title insurance company takes a look at it, and they say, "We will insure acts vehicular and pedestrian ingress and egress along Easter Road towards the covert, but not the other way."
Yeah, they're not going over that bridge.
The other way's a dead end. Goes from River Road?
Isn't that gravel driveway adjacent? Could you elaborate on that?
Are you looking at it?
Yeah. So this is not an egress, right?
So this parcel here...
May we approach?
Sure, sure. This parcel here owns this.
Okay. But they don't have a lot that's this shape, right?
They do not. This is a separate portion. It is a separate ownership, but this is connected to here. So he has the right to use this, and he can allow people to use it, but no one is given the right, nobody else has the easement right to that.
Yeah, and it doesn't help with the title company, obviously.
It does not. It does not. So that's own, this is connected here, and only here.
Okay. But Easter Road has insurable access, you know, it's...
That is correct. I just got to get turned around here.
Pretty hard to call it a road.
That's okay, that's okay.
Yes, this is where the access is insured. This, I believe, is like a dead end. I find there's nothing...
So just going down this map here, so are these also flaglots? This one with this little sliver here?
There is. There is no other flaglot in here.
Okay.
So all these...
Because these look like they would be.
All, so the property that...
I think there was like three down here, that you can see that little plant.
Nothing else is a flaglot. This is Easter Road. It continues up. There's different parcels, but each one rely on Easter Road for access.
Easter Road, there's no access to it.
Correct. So Luis, I don't remember his last name, he owns this property. He owns the easement. Raphael lives here, I believe, and he is allowed to use this from Luis. But this is the only access to Easter Road off of Circle Drive. The bridge is down here, and it's completely...
And this is River Road down here?
Correct.
Yes, yes.
Also, this one wouldn't be a flaglot.
There's no, yeah, there's no other flaglots.
I understand. Okay.
Let me, can I look at...
Yeah, yeah.
Sure. So this is the proposal, that's sort of like the flagpole there, that's coming off...
So this property and this property both seem to have...
Right into our property, up, and it just follows along.
Similar connection, right, to Skytop Drive.
You're over here, so this is Easter Road.
The neighbor.
Yeah, no, no, I'm just looking at his other crest in this area.
There may be, that, and I'm sorry.
I'm just trying to visualize.
They may be flaglots, correct, that their driveway may have access to that, so they may in fact be, I don't, off the, you know, top of my head, remember that.
It just looks as though this is attempted the same.
It's, I think, by operation of law, they're all like flaglots, because they all depend on Easter Road, but there's each owner, it's an easement.
He's talking about one over, so the access is off of Skytop, so they do own it, similar to a flaglot.
Yeah, or these two also, which are way worse conditions than what you're proposing, right? I mean, this one is...
So to prevent a landlocked situation, they've accessed a main, you know, entrance.
There's two more. It looks like, you know, half the lots around here have a similar condition with what you're asking for.
You're correct. I thought you were talking about these, just like...
Nope, no, no, I'm just looking at some of these other properties, right? I mean, like, this one's not...
It's been the area map. The area map does have, it's like several flaglots, so...
Two there, two here.
So initially, they were larger, and then they split them off and connected.
There's another one here, right, that they split there.
So you own that property there?
We do not own it yet.
Okay, you tried to own that property.
We're trying to own it from Vanessa Bugs. We're trying to buy it, but in order for us to be able to...
Sure, to make it feasible.
Because we want to, we want to rebuild.
And you're buying this little road?
Yes.
driveway?
We'll be getting that.
From Mr. Chudowski, yeah.
I don't believe there'll be any money exchanged.
Yeah, no, he's gifted.
Uncle Holly.
This is a good thing for you.
Everybody needs an uncle Holly.
Makes a lot more sense.
Yeah, well, I'm looking for one.
Too late for you. Order contractor purchase it. We've got a green light from HBCU. Okay. And it's not a VA one, right?
No.
Right, go to the rational.
So we want to do a site visit, and figure what's the best way to do the site.
Circle Drive or...
Circle Drive.
Yeah, Circle Drive.
If you feel lucky, come this way.
You can. Hey, you have a pretty big truck. We can go down with that.
I looked at the top two lots there off of Skytop. My son-in-law lives at the top, the last lot up there, my ex-son. And I looked at those two lots three, four years ago, but I couldn't get in touch with the owner, because I could have access from him.
East Pacific two, right here?
Oh, top.
Yeah, the last two, up at the end of Easter.
The one's down here?
Yeah.
So parking in Circle right there and walking?
Yeah.
There's no road or anything going up here?
No.
Okay. We're kind of trying to see that anyways, right?
Yeah, that's what you want to see anyway, right?
Yes.
And we'll obviously...
Was there water through there somewhere?
There is water from the guy, the driveway that comes up here. He has his covert pipe and it goes right in. And then Easter Road is a mess.
Yeah, I know. There's a swell or something else.
Yeah, and it's not correct. So it's all a mess.
Yeah.
And our, we kind of fixed that, too.
As far as over there, you know, talking CNP.
I'm just thinking, when I was out by Quav, my son-in-law, we were over here someplace, and we went through a stream or something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
So I made the sign lot post there for you.
Oh, thank you.
Yeah, two.
All right, so we will do the site visit on Saturday, the 20th. All right, we'll be there about 9:30-ish, so we're neighborhood. It'd be good if somebody, like I said, you know, before, somebody's there, you know, to show us kind of what's going on. We'll set your public hearing for that following Tuesday, all right, which will be the 23rd, right, B? 23rd, right. So we'll set your public hearing. You'll have a sign as well. Not quite sure where they would place that, the sign.
Circle Road, I would say.
Probably, right?
Be like right, right in front of where we're going to put the...
Yeah, yeah, I think that'd be best. Okay. Okay. All right. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
We'll see you on the 20th.
It's going to be a big mailer for this one, huh?
Yeah. Yeah. All right, now for the business this evening, right? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Second favor?
All right.